Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees to order. I'd like to read the following notice. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. The Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may also speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are always distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law, and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with the Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. I would now like to request that everyone take a moment to mute your cell phone or BlackBerry. Thank you. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting.
Mr. Smith, the Board owes an apology to the students for being beaten last week, beaten by other students. The Board owes them an apology. You were dedicated, you were entrusted as one of the students not to protect the security of the university. You are ruining the mission of your university, our great university.
As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public session of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. I am deeply saddened to report that the Honorable James P. Murphy, former Chair of the CUNY Board of Trustees, passed away in his sleep at home on Sunday, November 27th. He was 81 years old. Mr. Murphy was appointed to the Board on June 11th, 1980, and served as the Board's Chair from September 29th, 1980 until January 31st, 1997. He made numerous humanitarian and educational contributions, both personally and professionally, to improve the lives of others, his family, his many friends, and the greater society. He will be sorely missed. On behalf of the Board and Chancellor Goldstein, I would like to congratulate and welcome the new USS Chairperson and Student Trustee, Kafue Kuwaku. Welcome to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On behalf of the Board, I would like to express our collective appreciation to Corey Provost for his devoted service as USS Chairperson during the past two academic years. Somehow Corey found the time to train for and to participate in the ING New York City Marathon on November 6th as a runner for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society in memory of Brooklyn College co-student and mentor Tyrek Ritchie. Thank you, Corey, for adhering to such high standards of public and community service. In consultation with the Chancellor, I have appointed the following trustees who have agreed to serve on the search committee for a new president of Queensborough Community College. Trustee Wellington Chen will chair the committee, and trustees Rita DiMartino, Frida Foster, Judah Gribetz, and Jeffrey Weisenfeld will serve as trustee members. President Gail Mello will serve as the presidential representative on this committee. Faculty students and alumni have been selected pursuant to the university's guidelines. I'd now like to move the adoption of the Chancellor's University Report for November 28th, 2011. You have copies of the report at the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the University Report? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you. I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular Board meetings and the executive session of September 26th, 2011. You have a copy of the draft minutes in your meeting books. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any comments on the minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, that carries. Now I'd like to call on Chancellor Goldstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to restrict my remarks tonight to concentrate on just a few areas that I think is important for the Board to be aware of. In June of 2011, public higher education financing legislation adopted by the New York State Legislature and approved by the Governor was signed into law. The legislation requires that the CUNY Board of Trustees adopt a tuition policy by November 30th of this year, setting forth tuition rates for the period commencing with the 2012 academic year and ending in the 2015 academic year. The Board's Committee on Fiscal Affairs has made such a recommendation, and it is on the calendar for consideration later this evening. But just as background, the plan provides a critical component of the CUNY Compact, the public higher education leveraging model for which we have vigorously advocated for almost a decade. We supported the CUNY Compact in order to ensure funding stability, the enhancement of the university's programmatic priorities, our ability to maintain the access demonstrated by record-breaking student enrollment, and the protection of our faculty and staff from the kinds of layoffs that other public higher education systems have experienced in recent years. In light of the over $300 million in operating budget reductions CUNY has recently received, such layoffs would have been unavoidable without the CUNY Compact. The legislation enacted in June includes key provisions that bear directly on the university's operating budget. These include a maintenance-of-effort requirement to assure funding stability year to year during the life of the legislation, and a requirement that revenues generated by any tuition increase go directly to university purposes rather than to the state's general fund. The tuition plan called for by the legislation provides for a predictable tuition policy to replace the large unexpected tuition increases of the past with modest predictable increases that families can plan for and that the university can help minimize through public and private financial aid. Let me review the financial safety net that is already in place and how we plan to further strengthen how the university will protect needy students. The new state law provides that all students fully eligible for the state's Tuition Assistance Program receive a tuition credit for the full amount of an increase when the overall tuition exceeds $5,000. Students who receive partial Tuition Assistance Program awards will have a proportionate amount of the increase covered as well. As indicated in the university's 2013 budget request, we will establish a new CUNY Financial Assistance Program that will provide approximately $5 million for tuition waivers for students at risk of continuing their matriculation, as well as an institutional work-study program modeled after the federal work-study program to increase student jobs at CUNY, and a textbook initiative aimed at reducing the costs of instructional materials. Last year, $770 million in federal Pell Grants and state-supported TAP grants went to approximately 170,000 CUNY undergraduates. All of you should know that 58% of full-time undergraduates, or nearly 6 out of 10 full-time students, attended CUNY tuition-free based on the combined availability of these two financial aid programs. And 44% of all undergraduates received sufficient TAP and Pell to cover their full tuition costs. Many students had at least half of their tuition covered and were eligible for a federal tax credit covering the balance of their tuition. And all CUNY colleges, as you've heard me say many, many times, and our professional schools, are fully engaged in raising private and alumni support for student scholarships. You recall that we initiated this with a $1.2 billion campaign, which we completed, and we are well into the latter stages of a $3 billion campaign, the dominant amount of that money going eventually to support students. Labor unions such as District Council 37, 1199, and CWA provide employee assistance programs to subsidize tuition costs, as do many private employers, from Verizon and American Express who provide tuition assistance for their workers, to JP Morgan Chase, which offers paid internships at Baruch College and scholarships at Brooklyn College. CUNY also provides an interest-free tuition plan to assist students. The plan requires only a small one-time application fee of $18, to $16.50 for the fall. With all of this in place, there are changes that CUNY would like to see in the state's Tuition Assistance Program. The new law asks that both CUNY and SUNY conduct a study of the TAP program and make necessary recommendations or proposals. We are already at work on these analyses. Earlier this month, I issued a statement asking that the state's Tuition Assistance Program be open to undocumented students, a proposal that the New York State Board of Regions and others are pursuing. There are other significant policy options we are interested in, and I've asked Senior Vice Chancellor Mark Shaw to coordinate such a review. We are also working closely with SUNY, which has adopted its tuition plan last week, and I will be meeting soon with Chancellor Nancy Zimfer to follow up on the work of our respective staffs. That will conclude my part of the report this evening, Mr. Chancellor. I would like to now, with your permission, shift to Alan Dobrin, who is the university's Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer, to talk about the events of last week, and then I'd like to make some closing remarks based upon what he just said. So, Alan?
Thank you, Chancellor. The Chancellor has asked me to do a preliminary review of the removal of demonstrators from Baruch's 25th Street Lobby on November 21st. I reviewed more than a dozen videos, including those taken by students, interviewed the CUNY public safety officials and Baruch executives who made the evacuation decision, and was influenced what I personally saw during the later stages of the demonstration. I think that the Board is best served by having the events described in context and in chronological order. Several weeks ago, it became clear that the consideration of tuition increases, the identification by some students with the Occupy Wall Street protests, and the PSC's announcement that its welfare fund could no longer fund adjunct health insurance would cause an increase in protests on campuses and at the Board of Trustees meeting. We specifically expected protests on November 17th, which was designated by the Occupy Wall Street Movement as a national day of action, the Board of Trustees' public hearing of November 21st, and today's Board of Trustees' meeting. The Chancellor asked me to meet with the university's college presidents by borough and to review the university's priorities and what procedures should be followed during the protests. These priorities are, first, and most importantly, ensuring the safety of the university's students, faculty, and staff; second, allowing those who wish to exercise their First Amendment rights to be able to protest; and third, respecting the rights of students who are not protesters to pursue their education without interference. The meeting with the presidents included presentations on best practices in public safety and how to best allow for the opportunity to protest. The meetings lasted between one and a half and two hours each. On November 17th, protests occurred on seven CUNY campuses. Hundreds of students participated in these protests. There were no injuries and no arrests. On November 21st, in preparation for the Board of Trustees' public hearing at Baruch College, three places were set up to allow for testimony, protest, and observation. The meeting room that we are currently in, an overflow room with video and audio, which hold nearly 200 people in an area on 25th Street. Several hundred protesters marched to Baruch and began protests at the 25th Street entrance. They were invited to come inside and proceed to the overflow room. More than 100 protesters entered the lobby but refused to enter the overflow room. As the numbers continued to grow, entrance and egress to the building was blocked. Scheduled classes were being held that afternoon and evening, and students wishing to enter or leave were being held back. As some protesters began to sit in the lobby, both Baruch campus and university public safety officials became concerned that public safety was being compromised. They asked the protesters, using voice amplification, to either enter the overflow room or leave the lobby. Many protesters did not comply, and public safety officers were asked to move the demonstrators out of the lobby. As the officers moved forward with batons across their chests, some demonstrators began to push back. A pushing match ensued, and the protesters were moved onto 25th Street, where the protests continued. Some protesters were on the balcony above the lobby, and some water bottles and paper items were thrown down on the officers. There was no evidence that I saw of officers raising their batons and striking demonstrators. During and after the incident, 15 protesters were arrested, primarily for trespassing and resisting arrest. Some of the protesters who were arrested were taken to the ground so they could be put into wrist restraints. The public hearing ended later that evening with no further incidents.
Thank you, Alan. Mr. Chairman, as an addendum to what Alan just said, and consistent with the views of this Board and with the views of the administration towards continuous quality improvement, I'm going to take the events of the past few weeks and ask for assistance by a reputable and experienced organization to come in and review how we comported ourselves during those protest movements, and come in with recommendations on how we can continuously improve our work as we see this not going away in the short period of time. So, I actually started that process this weekend and had a discussion with an organization that is very well-versed in such matters, and we will go through the normal procurement practices that this university follows. I'll report back to the Board on a recommendation at a very short period of time after that.
Thank you very much. Are there comments or questions for the Chancellor on his report or on Mr. Dobrin's Very good. I'd like to make a brief statement myself. Our Chancellor, with the support of this Board, has led an historic battle for more than a decade to bring the CUNY Compact to fruition. He has done so in the face of very difficult economic times, painful budgetary reductions, and stiff political resistance. By working with governors, mayors, the state legislature, and the city council, he has helped achieve in New York what exists in no other state, namely legislatively mandated budgetary stability, an unprecedented maintenance-of-effort requirement for both the senior and community colleges, financial aid protection to assist needy students, and a multi-year program of modest predictable revenue increases. During this same period, our Chancellor organized his colleagues from other public higher education systems throughout the United States and hosted two national summits, bringing together top educational leaders to help mobilize financial support for public higher education. What he has accomplished here, what he is accomplishing here in New York, is admired nationally and internationally. Perhaps you'll permit me to recall that in a copy of my report on CUNY in 1999, our task force called for the state and the city to reexamine and reinvigorate the entire funding process. That report criticized funding processes characterized by a one-year time horizon and economic and political unpredictability. Today, we take a huge step forward in breaking that cycle. In 1999, we also criticized CUNY for not being effective in diversifying its funding base. Just consider how that has changed. There is not an institution anywhere in this country that went from raising less than $50 million a year to raising annually over $250 million a year. At the same time, CUNY's research and related activities more than doubled in the same period, placing the university today at record levels. Our Chancellor is leading an unprecedented modernization of CUNY. We now have new graduate and professional schools, the McCallie Honors College, Schools of Journalism, Public Health, and Professional Studies, a new home for the Law School, and a new community college scheduled to open next fall. We established a new campus in East Harlem, and new science and instructional facilities throughout the five boroughs. We saw the dedication of the new John Jay Campus this fall, and a new Fetterman Hall will open early next year. We are in partnership with great institutions in competing for the opportunity to help build a new Applied Sciences and Engineering Campus in New York City, all this utilizing the extraordinary talents of our faculty, students, and staff. At the same time, the Chancellor is leading the educational revitalization of CUNY, implementing policies supported by this Board to ease student transfers, to raise quality, to eliminate impediments to graduation, to create pathways to academic success, and assure more options for students. This is certainly a work in progress. The CUNY Compact model is now ingrained in state law and provides a foundation for the work that lies ahead. I thank our Chancellor and his team for all they have done, working with the trustees, presidents, faculty, students, and friends of CUNY, to assure that this university provides the best possible education for the people of our city, state, and nation. Thank you, Mr. Chancellor. I'd like now to call on trustee Joe Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on October 31st, 2011. After approval of the minutes of the meeting that was held on September 7th, 2011, the committee heard a presentation by Associate Vice Chancellor Matt Sapienza, and after subsequent deliberations by the committee, approved Calendar Item 3A, which is the operating budget request for fiscal year 2012, 2013. Mr. Chairman, in June of 2011, the State of New York enacted legislation authorizing the City University to implement a rational tuition policy by increasing its tuition up to $300 annually for five years for full-time undergraduate resident students, beginning in the fall of 2011, in the semester that starts in the fall of 2011. Calendar Item 3E is a resolution to authorize the university to adopt a revised schedule of student tuition that includes a $300 annual fee increase over current rates for all full-time undergraduate resident students, and a proportional increase in all other tuition categories at both the senior colleges and the community colleges, beginning with the fall 2012 semester and each year for the next three years until fiscal year 2015-16. You will find the detail of the revised schedule in the calendar of the current meeting. The new state legislation requires that a tuition credit be given to those students who are eligible for state TAP when the annual tuition exceeds $5,000. A portion of the revenues generated from the increased rates will be set aside for financial aid purposes. Mr. Chairman, before I ask Associate Vice Chancellor Sapienza to make a presentation on the operating budget request of the Board, I move the approval and the adoption of Calendar Items 3A and 3E.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
In front of all of you is a document labeled 2012-2013 Operating Budget Request, and that's the presentation that I'm going to go through now. On Slide 2 of the request, we talk a little bit about the current fiscal environment that we find ourselves in for fiscal year 2013. And the state and city are both facing challenges in closing their budget gaps for next year. The state and the city both recently revised their budget projections for next year. The state's budget gap has actually grown from about $2.5 billion to $3.3 billion for 2013. The city's projected gap has actually been reduced to about $2 billion as a result of the actions taken by the mayor and his recently announced November financial plan. But state and city still facing significant challenges in closing these gaps of $3.3 billion for the state, $2 billion for the city. As a result of the fiscal conditions at the state, as was mentioned earlier, CUNY has the sustained significant reductions over the last four years. Our senior colleges, we've sustained reductions of over $300 million, including a $95 million reduction in the current year. And at the community colleges, base aid has been reduced by 20% over the last four years, and this coming at a time where our enrollment at the community colleges has grown by over On Slide 3, we talk about the CUNY Compact, and we are once again, for the seventh year, be using the CUNY Compact as our financing vehicle for the budget request. And I know all of you are familiar with the CUNY Compact. It calls for additional public resources from the state and city to fully cover our mandatory costs and to cover a share of the programmatic initiatives contained in the budget request and modeled after the university's master plan. The remainder of the programmatic initiatives would come from internal resources, from private fundraising, restructuring and efficiencies, enrollment growth, and increased revenue from tuition increases. And on Slide 4, the backdrop of all of this, and as Chairman Schmidt mentioned in his comments, is the New York State Agreement on Higher Education, which was announced in June 2011 and which is modeled after the CUNY Compact. And so, in June, the state enacted this legislation, which authorized both CUNY and SUNY to implement a rational tuition policy to increase tuition up to $300 per year for five years through fiscal year 2016. And again, this was a key component in our CUNY Compact that we've been calling for for several years, and will provide a level of financial stability for the university, not only through tuition increases, but through the maintenance-of-effort provision that was contained in the legislation whereby the state has to provide the same level of funding to our senior colleges in any one year as was provided in the prior year, and will allow us to maximize and to leverage our private fundraising and our operational efficiencies, and allow our students and our families to plan for the costs of higher education throughout their career here at CUNY. The enacted state legislation also requires that a tuition credit be given to those students who are eligible for the state's Tuition Assistance Program when our annual tuition exceeds $5,000. Our tuition at our senior colleges is currently at $5,130. With the $300 increase that's being proposed tonight, that'll go up to $5,430. But any student who is fully eligible for TAP will have that difference covered by the university through this recent legislation passed by the State of New York. In keeping with the financial aid topic, on Slide 5, the university, in its budget request, is also proposing to set aside $5 million for financial aid for students who will be at risk for not being able to continue their matriculation as a result of this tuition increase. And there'll be three key initiatives that will be included as part of our financial aid program. One will be tuition waivers and scholarships for those students who are in harm's way. Two is we will institute a CUNY Institutional Work-Study Program that will be modeled after the federal work-study program. And lastly, we will provide assistance with the cost of textbooks for our students. Please keep in mind that eligible students can also receive the maximum Pell Award of $5,550. And just to provide some data there in that last bullet, in our last full academic year, CUNY administered about $541 million in Pell Grants to slightly less than 140,000 recipients, and $228 million in TAP awards to little over 100,000 recipients. On Page 6 is a summary chart of our budget and our three main funding sources of state, city, support, and tuition. And as you can see there, our adopted budget for our current year, 2012, is $2.6 billion. And our request for 2013 calls for an increase of $102.5 million in mandatory costs and $91.9 million program needs to bring our budget request for 2013 up to $2.8 billion. On Slide 7, the majority of our investment program will be in the flagship and research environment. And with the funds that we will raise through private fundraising, which we're calling for additional $10 million for our Compact initiative in the 2013 budget request, plus $8 million that we will generate through restructuring and efficiencies, that will bring our total investment program to $109.9 million, $45.5 million of which will be to hire 440 additional full-time faculty. And you can see on that chart there on Page 7 why it's so critical for us to have as our top priority the addition of full-time faculty. You can see from that graph that, over the last decade, we've hired over 1,700 new full-time faculty. We've gone from a little over 5,500 full-time faculty to a little over 7,000. So, our campuses have done a terrific job in hiring more full-time faculty. However, we haven't been able to keep pace with our record enrollment levels, which has created an increased gap in the percentage of instruction that's taught by full-time faculty. So, that is, again, our top priority, is to add full-time faculty lines at our campuses. Slide 7 is a more detailed table showing our requested increases for fiscal 2013. It's breaking it down by both senior college and community college, and you can see the areas of our programmatic increases broken out there. And as I said earlier, flagship environment, full-time faculty is our top priority. You can see the other areas there as well, student services, facilities improvements, and the rest of the items totaling $109.9 million. And then our mandatory cost increases of $102.5 to bring our total request to a $212 million increase. On Slide 9 provides some more detail on the mandatory cost increases. And again, as has been the case for the last several years, the largest component of which is fringe benefits, which is consistent with what state and city governments have been seeing over the last several years. For us, it'll be about a $73.5 million increase for next year. I also want to point out that our fringe benefits request for next year also includes funding to fully cover adjunct health insurance. And in addition, we have costs for energy, building rentals, new building needs, this for the operating costs of our new buildings that'll be coming online next year, and for salary increments in OTPS inflation. Lastly, is a summary on Page 10 of the funding sources that will provide the resources for next year's request of $212 million. And you can see there on the chart that the state and city would fully fund our mandatory needs and a piece of our programmatic initiatives, $15.6 million. We are also requesting from the state a $100 per FTE increase in the community college base aid rate. As I stated earlier, community college base aid has been reduced by 20% over the last four years, and so we're asking for a small restoration to those reductions over the last three years of $100 per student. The tuition increase will generate $65 million. We are assuming a 1% enrollment increase for next year, which would generate $11 million in revenue. And then, as I said earlier, our restructuring and philanthropy would generate $18 million to bring the total to $212 million in new resources. In terms of timing, January will be a key month for us, for our budget. The governor will be presenting his executive budget for fiscal 13 sometime in January. And in addition, the mayor will be issuing his preliminary budget for fiscal 2013 also in January. So, trustee Loda, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Matthew. Mr. Chairman? Are there comments or questions on the motion? Yes. Trustee Pantaleo?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few comments. The detail is obviously of crucial importance, but, you know, in engineering, there is a noise-to-signal ratio that you have to worry about. And I think with the detail, a couple of things actually get lost. And that is some really basic facts, really basic facts. The budget proposal that we're putting forward, this is what this meeting's really about, is the budget proposal, of which there are constituent parts. But the budget proposal we're putting forward is $2.8 billion. As has been mentioned earlier, over the last four years, our senior college full-time enrollment increased by 10%. The same period of time, the operating budget aid from the state that would go to the operating budget was reduced by $300 million. That's basically $1,300 rough numbers per student. That's a lot of reduction in state aid, and it's a problem, 20% community college that was just mentioned. Financial aid, I think one of the most significant facts that gets lost in a lot of detail is one that was mentioned in the chancellor's report, that financial aid covers full tuition for over 58% of our students, or 100,000 New Yorkers are receiving a university education free of charge to them. We're not talking about people who, you know, would otherwise necessarily have the ability to get a university education. Yet 100,000 New Yorkers, in spite of a budget cut, in spite of losing $300 million, are getting an education. I know the folks on this board, after three years, pretty well. And I think the overarching thing we all have in common is the belief in access and quality, that this education is not worth much if it's not accessible by the people, our fellow New Yorkers who absolutely need it. I think when facing a $300 million cutoff over the last several years by the state, in reduction, rather, of funds, being able to maintain 100,000 students at the lowest tuition that is available in state universities virtually anywhere, and I know that we've received some data on this, not virtually, absolutely anywhere, in the most expensive city in the United States is quite a feat, and I think that is extremely important for us to remember it. Our budget proposal today, that includes a tuition increase, has my support, not just but because, not just because it is needed, I support it, Mr. Chairman, because it does not do violence to the concept of access and quality. I support it because for the money that is going to be raised by tuition, money is going to be put aside to allow the poorer students to continue to go to CUNY, attend CUNY, without having to drop out. That is of crucial importance to this board, individually and collectively, not to do violence to the concept of access and quality. This budget request, or excuse me, this budget that we're putting forward, in spite of the retrenchments in aid from the state, also includes a morally appropriate and economically necessary, approximately $16 million total cost, about $10 million incremental cost, additional cost, for adjunct health benefits. I know of no major university that is raising or attempting to maintain benefits in the face of this type of budget crunch. I did something today that's totally unscientific, and the faculty members here and academics who are schooled in research would be right to say that that's nonsense, but I'm gonna share it anyway. I Googled a couple of simple phrases. One of them was universities, budgets, and faculty layoffs. Allowing for a lot of redundancy, I got 287,000 hits. It's, the fact of the matter is, surviving this economy without doing violence to the students and, in fact, increasing faculty numbers and maintaining benefits for adjuncts is something that I think is not only commendable, but it sort of defies the mast that I'm looking at, and not quite sure how we're gonna do it, but I commend both the administration and this board for considering doing that. I will wind up by simply saying, everybody on this board wants to protect the poorest of our students. Everyone on this board wants to protect access and quality, and no one on this board knows where we're gonna get the $300 million that was taken away. I think it is a burden that will be largely met by additional financial aid and some of the creative methodologies that are being employed to ensure that money will be set aside to offset the impact of this. I commend both the administration and this board for getting through this very difficult period and allowing us to have a number of years going forward with some semblance of financial stability while filling the holes in our full-time faculty ranks. And that is the reason why I am personally going to support and urge members of this board to also support the proposed budget request, including the adjunct faculty healthcare benefits and the rational tuition policy that's incorporated in it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Barry?
One of the things that is so critical during this time, Mr. Chairman, is in dealing with the dire situation that is facing us, is to have the appropriate amount of leadership that helps to guide us in the right direction. And certainly, the chancellor and his team have exhibited and are exhibiting that type of leadership by providing the safety net, using the combination of resources at our disposal in order to help those students who are most in need. The fact is, is that when I look at the system that we are now in, and when I was a student, you know, there were probably maybe 170,000 students at that time. Now, we are able to have an institution that handles over 250,000 students, and 58% of our full-time students are receiving some form of financial aid, which is extremely important. So, the safety net is important, but even more critical is having a strategy in place that enables us to handle the storms that will always be facing us in this economic time. And that's why the Compact is so critical and is so important, because it doesn't just rely upon one source. It looks at a number of different leverage points that we can use in order to help us to manage the system that's in front of us. So, that leadership is important, and this budget is exemplary of the type of leadership that is expressed. And also, it symbolizes the caring that I would underscore what trustee Pantaleo said, that there is not one trustee who is on this board, you know, that really does not care about students and does not care about the well-being of students and also providing the type of education and the environment for individuals to not only just survive, but to thrive. And the last thing I want to say in reference to that is that we have taken leadership at City University in ensuring that the Pell Grants are maintained. That's one of the things that we have done, and it's one of the things that also helps us and helps us, enables us to provide more leverage. So, just summarizing very briefly, Mr. Chairman, I support this budget proposal. I support our actions. I feel that they're prudent. I feel that they're necessary, and I feel that they are strategically aligned to help us to maintain and to build the type of institution or educational system that we know will help us to move forward.
Thank you very much. Yes, trustee Kuakua?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. First, I would like to say, I put it on record, that I'm pretty much in favor of all the work the board been doing for all these years in the past. And I know the chancellor always is trying their best to make CUNY to be affordable and also provide a good education. But in the same time, as a student leader, I have to make sure I put it out there that I'm not gonna be going for the tuition increase. I'm gonna be going against it, and I have pretty clear reason for that. And if the chairman allows me, I'll make sure I bring those remarks out.
By all means.
Okay. The first thing is, this board is being put on the hard seat by the state, because the state's supposed to be the one funding education. It's because they made cuts to CUNY, that's why we're all sitting here discussing this issue. And as of right now, we have students outside protesting because they don't want any increase in the tuition, and that had been happening for the past week. So, why would we be in the hard seat when the state refused to do their job, which is balance their budget and make sure that they provide all the funding to CUNY? It's because they failed to do that, that's why we be putting there. As a wise man once told me, "Education should be considered as an investment from the state." Investment meaning you invest in education, people go to school, they get degrees, they start working in the state, and they repay you back by taxes. And the higher they go up the ladder in education, the more taxes they will pay into you. And that's the investment the state should be making. But the state is failing to do so and trying to balance their budget on the back of the student, and I'm pretty much engaged in that now. Personally, I am not the type to make noise without any solution. What I see going forward is... What I see going forward is, we have to vote right now, as a board, no to this increase, not because we don't want the student life to be better in CUNY, but just to send a clear message to the state to do, to say, do your job, don't cut to education. That's the message we have to send to the state. Because the, once they start doing their job, we will not be sitting here discussing on those issues. And on my, on my part, on my end of the deal, right now, even though regardless of the outcome of this vote, I'm doing my part of the job, meaning right now, I'm in a, talking with Vice Chancellor Sanchez, to make sure that we try to create more opportunity for students, for scholarship, for example. We're working jointly to be able to create a scholarship website for all the students in CUNY, so they can go on that website and be able to have access to many scholarships. Instead of going to ten different websites to apply for scholarship, they should go to one place and be able to apply for all those scholarships if there is a need for that. And that's one thing I'm trying to do, to help my fellow students. But on the other hand, I'm urging this board to vote against the tuition hike, to send a clear message to Albany and say, do your job, don't put that on the hard seat to do your job for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bill?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to thank trustee Foster and DeMartino, who attended and served on the hearing with me last Monday. And I wanted to just bring two things up, because the most important thing to me is that we always work with true and accurate information. And I had the opportunity of reviewing the tapes, and while we're all very sympathetic to the issues of the students that were voiced there, but there were some statements that were made there that I just wanted for our clarification to be very clear about. And one was that CUNY's tuition would be higher than the other tuitions and some of the highest tuitions. And so I asked the chancellor and the administration to give me some information, because although I've sat on the finance committee, I wanted to make sure that I was making decisions based with true and accurate information. And the information that was provided to me was from, with regard to the tri-state area, meaning New Jersey, Connecticut, and SUNY, our four-year tuition is the lowest of all of those entities. So when you compare us with our tri-state people, we have, we will, and we have and will continue to have the lowest tuition for our four-years colleges. With regard to our, and when you look at our four-year tuitions, with regard to other public, public entities throughout the United States, we're in about the fifty percentile. So there are about fifty percent states that have higher and about forty-nine that have lower. But we are right in there, but not necessarily providing the same services that we do. I'm sorry, that's for the four-year college. For the four-year college, we're right in the bottom ten percent of all colleges and universities for four-year. For our community colleges, again, Connecticut has a lower community college, but we are right on par with New Jersey, and we're lower than SUNY. So I wanted that information to be on the record. You have documents in front of you. And our community colleges, that is where we're in the fifty percentile nationally. So I wanted us to be making decisions based upon accurate information, not some of the misleading information that was shared with us during the hearing. And then finally, one could have concluded during the public hearings that this board was not for funding the abject healthcare. And notwithstanding some of the statements that were made at the hearing, that is not indeed the case at all, that we as a board, as mentioned several times here today, have been very much in support of that expenditure. So I wanted to be on the record and clarifying some of the statements, incorrect statements that may have been made at that public hearing, and to say that, again, I am proud of the work that this administration is doing and maintaining affordable access to our students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, trustee Wazfeld.
I would, I would just add one footnote, kind of an uncomfortable subtext to all of this. Everyone who has spoken, has spoken about, from the chancellor, to trustee Pantaleo, to vice chair Berry, to you Chairman Schmidt, to everybody who has spoken about the exceptional care that's been taken to prevent any kind of disservice or disqualification to students, a level of generosity that nobody on the board has authorized in any grudging fashion. It's with a full heart, it's with a full understanding of the difficulty that so many students have. But at the same time, you have to ask yourself, in the middle of all of this, where we're trying to get a rational approach, so that even those who do have difficulty will be made whole through the additional tuition assistance that would be provided, why is there this type of rancor? And there is a subtext to this. This is not simply about the three hundred dollars. There's a reason, frankly, that the leadership of the PSC and Mrs. Bowen in particular, made an issue of health insurance where we were already approving it. It had been known to her that it was being approved. It's to create a disorder, it's to create a bad example for students. Yes, we're going to look at the comportment of the university public safety group with respect to what happened last week. But there ought to be a little bit of comportment in those who have to set an example for our students. Because what this is really about, my friends, and I would say to all of those who currently hold office at the state and city level, our public officials, and to those citizens of New York who care about public education, this is really about angling as to what will be the face of this university in the post-Goldstein-Schmidt era. God willing, that'll be a number of years from now, but that will come. What this is really about is that this university, the way it's conducted itself for the past forty years prior to the arrival of Chairman Badio, and for the last decade Chairman Schmidt and Chancellor Goldstein for the entire period, was not the way this entity operated. It was really subject to a great degree of scorn. And our public comportment, not just from within the administration, but the examples set for the students and then by the students themselves, is very critical to the future of this university. And the reason I mention public officials and the public in general, is they should pay attention to how this university moves forward when that new era comes, when this crop of trustees have run their course legally. And there's a larger picture here, because there was no reason with this type of very sympathetic, generous, and caring alternative to unexpected tuition increases and a form of predictability and making students who cannot afford the tuition, making them whole, this type of rancor is disingenuous, unnecessary. It's an amalgam of people who have set a bad example, of this amorphous Occupy movement which got involved, other outside forces. It's not the majority of the students of this university, and the university should not be tinged negatively by this unnecessary rancor. Thank you.
Further comments? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Recognized any abstentions? Thank you very much. Trustee Loda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I now present items 3B, 3C, and 3D together. Calendar item 3B is a resolution authorizing university to adopt a revised schedule of tuition charges for students in the doctor of physical therapy program at the Graduate Center. This will be effective for the spring 2012 semester. You'll find details of the revised schedule in the calendar of today's meeting. The proposed tuition increase is necessary to strengthen the academic curriculum and services to students in this doctoral program. Calendar item 3C is a resolution authorizing university to adopt a revised schedule of tuition charges for students in the doctor of nursing science programs at the Graduate Center. This too is effective with the spring 2012 semester. You will find details of the revised schedule in the calendar of the current meeting. The proposed tuition increase is necessary to strengthen the academic curriculum and services to students in this doctoral program. Finally, calendar item 3D is a resolution authorizing university to adopt a revised schedule of tuition charges in the form of a differential tuition for the doctor of audiology consortium program, effective with the spring 2012 semester. You will find details of this revised schedule in the calendar of today's meeting. The proposed differential will be used to offset costs for this doctoral program. The program's onsite clinical facilities is mandated by the program's educational accreditation organization. For items 3B, 3C, and 3D, the Graduate Center will continue to provide financial aid to assist eligible New York State residents in affording the increase in tuition. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar items 3B, 3C, and 3D.
I'll second that. Are there comments or questions? Yes, Professor Cooper.
Point of information, did I understand you to say that the students who cannot afford the increase will be supported? I gather not from the five million dollars, but from some other source?
Sure. The Graduate Center will set aside a portion of the revenues from these increases for any student who may be in harm's way as a result of the increases, separate from the five million dollars that was included in the university's budget request.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed abstentions? Motion carries? Noted. Professor Loda?
Thank you. Calendar item 3F is a resolution to approve an amendment to the university's investment policy adopted in May 2011, revising the spending policy to permit the senior vice chancellor of budget, finance, and fiscal policy to delegate authority to the associate vice chancellor of budget and finance and the university controller to make decisions regarding an expenditure above the applicable spending rate for non-endowed funds. You'll find the detail of the spending policy as appendix B in the calendar of today's meeting. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3F.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the investment policy? Comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? That carries?
Mr. Chairman, calendar item 3G is the purchase of unarmed security guard services. It came to the attention of the committee after our meeting of October 31st, and given the essential nature of its content, was added to this calendar. Calendar item 3G is a resolution to authorize the general counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the university to purchase unarmed security guard services. This contract shall be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder after public advertisement and sealed bidding pursuant to law and university regulations. The contract shall be available for use by the constituent colleges, and the total estimated annual cost shall not exceed fifteen million dollars. The university will use these unarmed security guard services to safeguard the university's students, faculty, and staff. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of calendar item 3G.
I'll second that. Are there questions on the item? Yes.
I just received an email this morning from one student about this item, because based on the incident that happened last Monday, they assume the university want to get more security guard just to be able to go against the student or restrain the student or beat them up. That was the email that I received this morning. So I just want to ask, and for you to put it official on the record, why is that we hiring additional security officers?
Mr. Schaefer?
These are not additional security guards. The university, for a long time, has had both its own employees as security personnel and contract services from outside companies. The contract, the contracts with the outside companies expired last year, and this is a replacement contract for outside services.
All right. Thank you. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed abstentions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This concludes my report.
Trustee Loda, we all owe you and the committee a good round of applause. Thank you for all of this. All right, we'll turn next to the committee on academic policy, programs, and research. May I call on trustee Wellington Chen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this November 7, 2011 meeting, the committee approved four policy matters. Calendar number 4A, request to approve the CUNY international and domestic travel guidelines. It is becoming increasingly common for universities across the United States to formalize internal rules designed to protect the safety and security of students on off-campus educational trips, both domestic and international. The guidelines presented here provide a set of consistent procedures to be implemented at all CUNY campuses to ensure trip sponsors access and mitigate any potential risks to the health and safety of our students. Calendar number 4B, request to approve the letter of intent for the doctor of nursing practice at CSI. Similar to the recently approved DMP program at Hunter, this proposed program reflects a growing national trend toward requiring practice-focused doctorals in healthcare disciplines. The DMP prepares practitioners of nursing for advanced practice by equipping them with knowledge and skills necessary to translate research findings into clinical practice in hospitals, homes, and community settings. CSI has a longstanding history of providing graduates nursing programs to serve the needs of students in its geographic area. The board is presently asked to approve the letter of intent. As is custom for doctoral programs, a full proposal will follow a subsequent meeting. Calendar number 4C, application to register the dual joint ASBS in chemistry and pharmaceutical sciences at Queensborough Community College and York College. This program involves a partnership between QCC and York. QCC will provide students with both a solid general education and foundational coursework in chemistry. At York, students will take advantage of the strength of the college pharmaceutical science programs, including its internship opportunities. The program prepares graduates for entry-level employment with the health-related manufacturing industry as well as government regulatory bodies. Calendar number 4D, application to register the AA in communication studies at Queensborough of Manhattan Community College. The proposed program addresses the foundations and practices of communication in a global, multicultural context. The curriculum draws extensively from the strength of the speech, communication, and theater arts department, focusing primarily on the non-technical aspects of communication. The degree is excellent preparation for both entry-level employment and transfer to a baccalaureate program. Item 4A through 4D were approved by the committee, and I recommend their approval by the board.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions on any of these items? Yes, Dr. Morales?
I am again want to make sure that when we give the nursing, the, when we give, I want to make sure that when we give the nursing the opportunity to diagnose and treat illnesses, I'm referring to mental health, we have to make sure that treatment, usually you have two components, supportive psychotherapy, which I have, which I'm not opposed to it, but then we have pharmacotherapy, meaning that you have to have a real knowledge about medication, how they are effective in the brain, how they are related to other illnesses, the question of, are they contraindicated? This is a very complicated situation, which we physician has gone through many, many years of training to be able to do that. And again, I want to make sure that the treatment that we're talking about should be well delineated, and perhaps these nurse should have a very complete training before they're being allowed to use medication. And also, you're going to have a real problem with the American Psychiatric Association. They are not even allowed, the psychologists, to prescribe medication. And then to go back into nursing, allow nursing to prescribe medication, will be a very serious situation, and I don't know how you will resolve that. situation, and I don't know how you will resolve that.
Yes.
Okay. In New York State, there are very specific regulations about this, which we will be following exactly. In New York State, nurse practitioners are able to prescribe, not other types of nurses, but nurse practitioners are able to, and in order to do that, as part of the nurse practitioner training, which includes the DMP program, there must be a course on medications and prescription writing. So that is all taken care of according to the regulations of New York State.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Yes.
Yeah, I have a comment on the item four C, and pretty much, I'm pretty much, I'm in favor of those type of relationship between our junior and senior colleges. And I will, since we have all our president down here, I will encourage our president to build up those bridges between our junior and senior colleges, and I believe the pathway is going to help a lot, but we still need to see more of those connection because we don't want that disconnect between our junior and senior colleges. Because once our student graduate from the junior, they should feel like they can get into the program they did in their junior college, they can just get into those program in the senior college by the way. And building those relationships will help a lot. So I would encourage our president to work towards that.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions? All right. Then all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed, abstentions? That carries. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. May I call on trustee Valerie Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am pleased to present for the board's consideration the items that the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration reviewed at its meeting on October 31, 2011. Item five A, Amendment of the Bylaws of the Board of Trustees. The current bylaws contain numerous provisions that are outdated, lack clarity, do not conform to university practice, or are duplicative of provisions contained in the education law or the university's collective bargaining agreements. Following a careful review of the current bylaws and consultation with the university administrators, the Office of the General Counsel has drafted revised bylaws that rewrite or remove outdated provisions, delete unnecessary material, and conform the bylaws to current practice. The proposed bylaws are clearer, easier to work with, and closer to the purposes of bylaws, which generally do not state policy or work rules, but are a statement of the rules and regulations governing the management of an organization. Since notice was provided concerning amendments to the bylaws in the minutes of the meetings of the Board of Trustees for May 2, 2011, June 27, 2011, and September 26, 2011, additional changes have been made as a result of further review and consultation. Accordingly, the board is requested to waive notice as to those changes in order to bring the revision process to a conclusion at this meeting. Mr. Chair, I present item five A for the board's consideration.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Item five B, revisions to the guidelines and procedures for discontinuation of instructional staff personnel mandated by financial exigency. Among the articles deleted from the bylaws in the resolution just adopted by the board are provisions relating to the retrenchment of instructional staff. These provisions are being incorporated instead as board policy into the guidelines and procedures for discontinuance of instructional staff mandated by financial exigency. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed these provisions and recommends their approval. Mr. Chair, I present item five B for the board's approval.
I'll second that. Are there questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Item five C names the Helena Rubenstein Continuing Education Scholarship Fund for Career Advancement. Since 2008, the Helena Rubenstein Foundation has supported scholarships for continuing education students at CUNY colleges who are seeking career advancement through yearly grants to the university. As the foundation undergoes dissolution and final distribution of its assets, it has chosen to make a $1 million gift to CUNY to endow this scholarship fund. In recognition of this generous gift, the Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration is pleased to recommend the naming of the Helena Rubenstein Continuing Education Scholarship Fund. Mr. Chair, I present item five C for the board's approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Item five D amends the governance plan of Queensborough Community College to extend representation on the college council to two currently underrepresented constituencies: experienced abjug faculty members and retired faculty members who show active interest in college concerns and participate in college activities. The proposed amendment was adopted by the college council on November 23, 2010, and are supported by the college president. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration recommends their approval.
I'll second that. Are there questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chair, I present item five D for the board's approval. Items five E through five I pertain to naming opportunities at a number of our colleges, which I will present as a group. They include the Elizabeth and Arthur Mitteron II Faculty Dining Terrace on the outdoor commons of the new building at John J. College of Criminal Justice, the Barry S. and Evelyn Strach Scholarship Endowment, and the Barry S. and Evelyn M. Strach Classroom at Queens College, the Hammel Family Clinic Conference Room, and the Solomon Slotkin Classroom at CUNY School of Law, and the Anna and Irving Brodsky Clinical Chair at the City College of New York. Together, these gifts total more than $1.5 million. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed them and recommends their approval. Mr. Chair, I present items five E through five I for the board's consideration.
I'll second that. Are there comments or questions on these naming items? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed, abstentions? Those items all carry.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. I'd like to call on trustee Pacili.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At its meeting on October 31, 2011, the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs approved one item. Calendar item six A, the City University of New York Policy on Child Care Services. A number of CUNY colleges desire to expand childcare services to children of non-matriculated students, to college faculty and staff, and community members. The Board of Trustees resolutions that authorize the organization of some of the colleges' childcare centers addressed only service to children of matriculated students and not service to others. The purpose of this resolution now is to clarify and detail the university's position that although the primary purpose of childcare centers operating on a CUNY college campus is to serve dependent children of registered, matriculated college students, centers may serve the children of colleges' non-matriculated, part-time students, as well as the children of the colleges' faculty and staff and community members, so long as the needs of the dependent children of the colleges' registered, matriculated students are being met and to the extent that space and funding permit. Any college that wishes to expand services to include children of registered, non-matriculated students, faculty, or staff, shall submit a proposal to the Office of the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs to review and approve. Guidelines regarding expansion will be developed and distributed by that office. Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval and adoption of calendar item six A.
Thank you. I'll second that. Are there comments or questions? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed, abstentions? That carries.
Mr. Chairman, this now concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I'd like to call on trustee Frida Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered six items at its meeting of October 31, 2011. These action items are listed in this board meeting as calendar items seven A through seven F. The first one, New York City College of Technology, a lease renewal. To authorize a 15-year lease renewal for space at 25 Chapel Street in Brooklyn, New York, the current lease expires in May 2012. New York City College of Technology has occupied classroom and office space at 25 Chapel Street since 2002, and the lease will expire in May 2012. The resolution will authorize a lease renewal for an additional 15 years. Item number two, a resolution authorizing the execution of a new 15-year lease agreement for space at 119 West 31st Street, New York, in New York City, on behalf of the CUNY School of Professional Studies. The CUNY School of Professional Studies currently operates out of the facilities scattered throughout Manhattan. The new site will place the school at one centrally located facility with adequate space for the school's academic and administrative needs. Item number three, is a resolution authorizing a 10-year contractual agreement on behalf of Hunter College to provide approximately 40 furnished apartments at 1760 Third Avenue in New York City. The demand for student housing has outstripped Hunter College's 600-bed dormitory at its Brookdale campus. The facility at 1760 Third Avenue will provide double and triple occupancy furnished rooms for students from Hunter College and other CUNY institutions, offering competitively priced housing in New York City. The fourth resolution is to approve the five-year capital budget request for fiscal year 2012 to 2013, through fiscal year 2016 to 2017, on behalf of the City University of New York. For this, Vice Chancellor Wineshaw will give us a brief overview of this capital budget request.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If the members will look in their packet, there is a handout entitled City University of New York Fiscal Year 2012-2013 Capital Budget Request. And I would just like to briefly go over the requests that we are putting forth to the board. In the first slide, you'll see that in 2007, CUNY prepared a full five-year capital request. The result was significant. Working with the colleges and the chancellor and the senior staff, CUNY received $1.8 billion that fully funded some projects while leaving some only partially funded. After the first year, we received mostly additional critical maintenance funds, both for senior and community college. This slide is an overview of the funds that CUNY received from the state. As a result of many years of the budget process, CUNY currently has accumulated $3.3 billion in senior college appropriations and re-appropriations, and $568 million in community college appropriations and re-appropriations. On the second slide, this slide shows how we've been spending the money at CUNY, and as you will see, we have been spending at an unprecedented rate. Over the last five years, the university has spent $2.2 billion on capital improvements throughout its 24 campuses. As the board knows, we've made a priority of critical maintenance, and to date, the state has funded $1 billion for senior colleges' critical maintenance projects. The community colleges are slightly different in situation. As the board knows, there needs to be a 50-50 match, and since 2009, we've been working with the city of New York to make sure that there is that 50-50 match for critical maintenance projects. And since 2007, I might point out that CUNY has received over $100 million in city funds for critical maintenance projects, which amounts to over $200 million to be spent on these projects. On the next slide, you can see the projects which have been initiated since 2007. At the senior colleges alone, we've initiated 415 projects totaling more than $593 million. And at the community colleges, we've initiated 77 projects totaling more than $268 million. And I would dare say, if you go on any one of our 24 campuses, you will see a lot of activity. No college has been untouched, and we have major critical maintenance projects underway at our senior colleges. Just to point out a few, at CCNY, we have almost completed the Shepherd Hall facade restoration. At Hunter College, escalator upgrades. At Lehman College, we have a major central plant upgrade, and at New York City Tech, Worries Hall upgrade. The community colleges as well have seen a lot of work on their campuses. At Bronx Community College, we're in the midst of a utility upgrade, and we're conducting both Phase One and Phase Two. Queensborough Community College, electrical upgrades. And at Hostos Community College, at 500 Grand Concourse, we're doing a major renovation of the fifth floor. So here are the details of the capital budget in this resolution before you. The five-year request covers the period 2012-2013 through 2016-2017, and represents the university's additional need above and beyond the amounts provided in the last four budget years. This year, the university is requesting $5.6 billion for the upcoming five years. We're also requesting about $91 million in REZA-A funding from the city, both through the city council and the borough presidents. As for our priorities in this request, our request needs are prioritized by both the Board of Trustees and approved in various resolutions before this board. The priorities are funding to complete existing projects, such as Academic Building One at City Tech, renovation of the Lawrence and Eris Field Building at Baruch College, continue to work for funding for critical maintenance projects, and continue to request funds for the chancellor's Decade of the Sciences Initiative, and to upgrade technology across the university. As this board knows, we've had many buildings open this past year. The Hunter School, the Silverman School of Social Work, and the CUNY School of Public Health opened this past September, as did the Graduate Center Apartments associated with this parcel of land. This September also, we opened the New York Simulation Center for Health Sciences. This was a partnership with NYU. If you were to go onto the CCNY campus, the Marshack facade replacement has been completed. And just a few weeks ago, we opened the John J. College new building, this new 620,000 square foot building with classroom labs and support spaces. And quite frankly, the next year coming forward, we will be equally as busy opening up new buildings. BMCC Fidomen Hall will be opening in September of 2012. Our Bronx Community College North Instructional Building will also be opening up in September of 2012. Our New Science Building at Lehman will open later on in 2012, as well as our CUNY, our new CUNY Law Facility in Long Island City will be opening up this summer. Madam Chair, that's my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Are there questions on the capital budget request?
Okay, hearing none. Item number five is a resolution to authorize the amendment to the resolution adopted at the meeting of February 26, 2007. It was calendar item number one C, on behalf of Kingsborough Community College, to allow an increase in the approved amount for renovation of the college bursar's office. This amendment will authorize an increase in the amount approved in the resolution, the February resolution trustees meeting, from $370,000 to $1,274,000. This additional amount will accommodate the expanded design, construction, furniture, and equipment costs for the entire office suite. and equipment costs for the entire office suite of the bursar at Kingsborough Community College. And item number six is a resolution to authorize agreement to provide credit support for the residence hall known as the Summit on behalf of Queens College. The project has been very successful and fully occupied since its opening in two thousand and nine. A letter of credit extension required for financing the Queens College Residence Hall will expire in January two thousand and twelve and must be renewed. Because of the deterioration in the credit markets, an extension can only be secured if CUNY guarantees any shortfall in the rent revenue needed for debt service and operating costs. Any call on the CUNY guarantee would follow a financial obligation by the Queens College Special Projects Fund and is extremely remote. I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
I'd like to second the motion. Are there further questions or comments on any of the items? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed abstentions? Thank you very much. Those items carry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Calendar item number eight is included in your calendar book and is for informational purposes only. It serves as a notice of an action taken previously by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee. On October thirty first, two thousand and eleven, we approved one item recommended by the chancellor. The action taken is listed as, I quote, "The City University of New York Sale of CUNY Headquarters Building at Five Thirty-Five East Eightieth Street, New York, New York." You have the resolution, the action on page twenty-three of your calendars. That concludes the business of today's meeting, and I am happy to declare this meeting adjourned.